Good evening El Segundo, we're gonna get started. We've got a great turnout tonight and a whole bunch of Little Leaguers and softball players really excited to talk to you. We have a special guest of honor this evening as well. So we're calling to order this regularly scheduled city council meeting. We are privileged to have Father Alexi Smith from Saint Andrew Russian Greek Catholic Church who's gonna lead the invocation for this evening. And then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Carol Perstuck. So if you could all please rise.
Let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord God of all creation. Through your goodness, we've been graced to live and work in the city of El Segundo. Glad in our hearts tonight with the fragrance of your love. Brighten our eyes with the light of your guidance. Delight our ears with the melody of your word. And shelter us all in the stronghold of your providence. We render thanks this evening particularly for the life of Vivian Houghton. She's graced this earth for 100 years. May God continue to bless her each and every day. Look upon this meeting tonight of our city council and fill all who will participate, whether they be council members, members of our city staff, members of the public providing input with the spirit of your wisdom and civility that in these challenging times we in El Segundo might inflesh the words of your prophet Isaiah, "Come, let us reason together." May the members of our city council always act in accordance with your will and may their decisions be for the greater good and well-being of all who either live or work in our municipality. Enable all of us to use wisely the gift of El Segundo which you have so graciously entrusted to us that we all might be led closer to you and to one another and to the eternal blessings you promise. And may we never forget the ever-increasing numbers of our residents who are less fortunate than are we. Amen.
Please join me in the flag.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Father Alexi. I don't know about you council members, but hearing the Pledge of Allegiance like that took me back to grade school. It was awesome. Thank you. Alright, so the first up we have Accommodation. Councilman Nickel, would you like to read that please?
Yes, before I start, I just want to wish Vivian a happy birthday belated. It was yesterday. So at some point maybe all of us can sing happy birthday to Vivian. She's 100 years young. But here we are, Accommodation City of El Segundo, California. Whereas a happy resident of El Segundo for over 20 years, the beautiful and vivacious Vivian Houghton celebrated her 100th birthday yesterday on September 16, 2019. You may have met her on one of her daily walks around the neighborhood, in a local restaurant, or shopping at her favorite destination, the 99 cent store, as she loves to greet and chat with people she meets. And whereas born in Hartsville, Missouri to farmers Fred and Julia Pridgen, her family moved to California at the Depression and around the time that she was first married when she was 20 years old. Her first husband, Lane Wilson, was in the Navy and unfortunately died in World War II, leaving her a widow with a three-year-old daughter Helen Wilson Glygola. It was a decade later that Viv met and married her second husband, Richard Houghton, a young officer in the Navy and a graduate of the Naval Academy. Her family quickly expanded to include three more children each a year apart, Jill, Becky, and Rick. And whereas an avid reader, Viv pursued her interest in education and received an AA degree from West LA College. She worked as a Realtor in Baldwin Hills and as a travel agent, which took her to Europe and many exotic locations such as Hong Kong and the USSR. And whereas a charming and gorgeous beauty with a contagious laugh, Viv makes friends wherever she goes and is fond of conversing with others. She enjoyed the time she spent volunteering and participating in fundraising activities which found her doing everything from working in a hospital guild thrift shop to modeling and walking the runway at fundraiser events. And whereas she enjoys subscribing to numerous newspapers and magazines, having visitors, and talking to friends and family on the phone, watching soap operas, golf, and the news, and going out to dine, even though she's slowed down considerably the last few years. And whereas her family has always been the greatest importance to her, and she enjoys her position as the matriarch, although her beloved son predeceased her, her three daughters, seven grandchildren, and 18 great-grandchildren continue to give her great joy along with other extended family members and friends. Now therefore, on this the 17th day of September 2019, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby extend our congratulations and sincere best wishes for a very happy 100th birthday. And Vivian, if you'd, Vivian, if you'd like to say something before we come down, we're going to, we'd like to present you with a small token, small birthday present. Our little town here turned 100 in 2017, and so I have here one of our centennial coins celebrating our 100th birthday that we'd like to give you while you celebrate your 100th birthday. Yeah? Are you up for a photo Vivian?
Would you like to have your photo taken with the city council?
I think we're in.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Vivian. Happy birthday to you.
Sorry, Sweden.
That was pretty great how all the kids joined in singing too. If I could live to be 100. I would love to live to be 100. Wouldn't you love to live to be 100? Go surfing on your 100th birthday? Alright? I'm gonna be 105. I mean hey Derrick Johnson's helping us get there, right?
Alright, next up, we have, that was incredible. Thank you for allowing us to do that. We have Councilman Pimentel with some recognitions to give out.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. We have five different All-Star teams that we're going to recognize. We will start with softball and we will go oldest to youngest. So, we're gonna start with the girls softball 14U Gold, if you are ready. This is Coach Fusco and then Linda Luthrow, Eric Luthrow, Elizabeth Lewis, Hannah Lewis, and Paul Dennis led this team. We want to congratulate the team for advancing to the Western Nationals in Redding, California. For those of you who don't know how girls softball works, that's as high as you can go. So they posted 20 wins in their All-Star campaign and were finalists in the Laguna Niguel Invitational. So congratulations to Coach Fusco and your team. If you'd like to bring them up, we have an award for you.
We can have them all come up here.
Hi, I don't know. I don't want people to trip.
Gentlemen. Gentlemen, gentlemen, ladies. Is this loud enough or should I just talk? Now for the 12U team led by Coach TD Mayer, coaches Ryan Wance, Brandy Peacock, Eric Stevenson, and Jim Walker. This team posted a 31, 12, and 2 record in tournament play over the summer. Finalists in all four summer Invitational tournaments without a single loss in pool play or elimination games that were not in the finals. They were also finalists in the LA South Bay championship and won three games in one day and the state tournament finishing in the top 10. They won a tournament high of six games in championship play at the Western Nationals in Medford, Oregon, including all four on Saturday to make the final four on Sunday, ultimately finishing in fourth in the Western Nationals. So thank you Coach, if you'd like to come up? Waiting on one. Alright, Little League, we will start with the 12U All-Stars. The El Segundo Little League All-Stars played very exciting baseball this past summer. Never going quietly, consistently playing from behind, they pushed through elimination games repeatedly. They hit home runs including two in one game at one point with fantastic pitching and made several gigantic plays. We'll start by recognizing 12U All-Stars coached by Jeff Puffer, assistants Michael Alcala and Jose Mendez. Gentlemen. Next up, we'll recognize the 11U team. The 11U team, Coach Jason Nupper, coaches Al Rico and Mike Wagner. Come on Coach. And now our 10U All-Stars coached by Jay DePertis, assisting Mendez. And Darian Isaacs.
Okay.
For whatever reason, that last little photo spot, I was like, "Oh, I'm getting warm." You got a haircut today, didn't you? After Corona?
I'll say, yeah.
Where'd everybody go?
Okay. Next up, we have Emergency Management Coordinator Randy Collins to recognize Amateur Radio Club. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, Mr. McNich, thank you for this opportunity. Once upon a time, before cell phones, before email, before walkie-talkies and all modes of other communication, there stood an elite group of folks that allowed the country to communicate at the height of the Cold War. And these folks were called amateur radio groups. And when we expect all of our communications to break down, whether it be an earthquake or a nuclear attack or any other type of infrastructure disruption, these groups of volunteers still stand ready to help us communicate after a disaster. And I appreciate Councilmember Pimentel inviting the amateur radio group here today, who has performed admirably throughout the year. They train, they exercise, they meet, and they prepare for us. And actually even the fact that it's National Preparedness Month and on the same night that we are adopting our new emergency operations plan, which the El Segundo Amateur Radio Group is written into that plan as part of our strategy and doctrine to use them in case of, to assist in our communications, I think it's appropriate that tonight be the night that we recognize this group. And so with that, I have two folks here that have been instrumental in helping with organizing the group and supporting the group. And I'm going to first turn it over to Emil, who has been definitely an angel on my shoulder in helping get the support that we need for the amateur radio group in terms of the vehicle that we maintain and get it to where they're utilizing it for their amateur radio field day and supporting them throughout their exercise and then also the other times that we bring it out. And he would like to say a few words about the amateur radio group as well.
Good evening, council members, City Manager. In the year and a half that I've been here with El Segundo, it's been impressive to see that the amateur radio group takes their training seriously. I've been speaking with Martin and his colleagues, and if I call them for Disaster Preparedness Day that we just had last week, they're always willing to come out to represent and to show that what they're capable of doing to the residents of El Segundo. When we're getting ready for their field day that we have that begins between Friday through Sunday once a year, it's very impressive that they go out there, they're taking it seriously, and they're communicating with all the other South Bay cities who are part of the amateur radio group. So, it's, we're 2019 going on 2020. Some people might go amateur radio, why do we need that? Why should we even pay attention or fund that? And it's nice to see that the city of El Segundo and the representatives of the amateur radio group are taking it seriously because, like Randy mentioned, when all technology goes down and when that disaster hits, we need something that we're able to communicate, and that would be the amateur radio group. So, I hope that we continue to support them and work together as, you know, as a city, as the emergency managers of the city of El Segundo. Thank you, gentlemen.
One of our objectives this year during the amateur radio field day in the summer was to really get the first responders involved, and so we coordinated an opportunity for the first responders to see what the amateur radio group was doing at Hilltop Park. And one person that really latched on to that was Battalion Chief Lee, and she really got in there and learned what the amateur radio group was doing, and it became a passion of hers, and then she really set out to support them with various different equipment that they needed in the truck, and she really came through for us in that regard. And so I'd like to have her say a few words as well.
I didn't know you were gonna say that. I was really here for the radio group. I just wanted them to know that from the fire department, we admire and appreciate what they do for our community, and they will always have the fire department's support.
And with that, the true heroes of tonight with, that we're recognizing is the amateur radio group. And unfortunately, not all of them could be here, but a representative of them are, and would just like to ask them to stand up and be recognized, and I'm sure we're gonna want photos or whatever, but also the fire department has brought a token of our gratitude to provide to them. And so with that, I would just like to say thank you for all your hard work in being a volunteer for the city of El Segundo.
Randy, we'd love to do a photo with them, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, please, thank you. Hey Randy, before you go, can you just address, one thing that occurred to me is, I'm sure I see the CERT shirt for the gentleman, and are the CERT, the trainees, the new CERT-trained residents, what are they learning about the radio, you know, amateur radio, if anything? Like, how would, in the event of emergency, what should we all know that aren't operators of amateur radio? Like, how can we help? How can we get information? That kind of thing?
Well, and the CERT, the shirt that you see is, many of the amateur radio groups also have participated in the CERT training.
That's awesome.
And so that's why, you know, they're just dual volunteering, and that goes to speak to their dedication to the city. And with that, I think it's important that we get the amateur radio group out like we did for Disaster Preparedness Day last week, where we had the CERT group out and we had the amateur radio group out, both kind of co-located right there in front of the fire department. And what the amateur radio group does for us is provides us with redundant backup communications that are able to speak to the County Emergency Operations Center, they're able to speak to emergency operations centers in the South Bay, and they're able to speak to all kinds of people across the country. So, when other forms of communication break down, they're able to really communicate for us, so we can get news in, get word out, make requests for assistance, and that sort of thing. So it just really opens up the lines of communication, especially during the critical infrastructure failures. And so that's what we need to communicate to the community, and anybody that's interested, get them involved as much, because we have a finite amount of people, and the more we have, that goes to the strength of the program.
Great, thank you Randy. Thank you Emil, appreciate it, yeah. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. I think Mayor Protem's gonna read this one, it's regarding the Fair on Richmond.
Yes, so we have the Fair on Richmond that's this Saturday. So we have a proclamation from the city of El Segundo, whereas the Fair on Richmond is proudly produced and organized by the El Segundo Quanis Club as a fundraiser for local scholarships, school programs, and activities for the youth of El Segundo. And whereas the Fair on Richmond Street provides El Segundo school student groups, civic groups, and nonprofit organizations an opportunity to promote their activities, associations, and to raise funds for the school and community projects through the sale of snacks, arts, and crafts, and other items. And whereas the Fair on Richmond Street affords people from other communities the opportunity to discover the hometown atmosphere of downtown El Segundo while experiencing wholesome family entertainment at its finest. And whereas the city of El Segundo recognizes the merits of the Fair on Richmond Street and commends the El Segundo Quanis Club for continuing to carry on this tradition, traditional El Segundo event, which has become a celebration of community. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the observance of 2019, the Fair on Richmond Street from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday, September 21st, 2019, and invite the community to give the generous support to all the groups, organizations, merchants, and volunteers participating in the fair. And we have Barry Gibbon here to accept this proclamation.
Hello, hello, thank you. This is, the fair's been going on for 40 years, and this year, it's really just built up steam, it's gonna be bigger and bigger. We got a lot of different things going on, but last year we had about 5,000 people show up, and so this really is a, it is the fair for all of El Segundo. So we've, of the 110 artists who are all gonna have booths selling things, we've really pushed to get local artists out. So if you go to the Facebook page, The Fair on Richmond Street, if you go to Facebook and Google The Fair on Richmond Street, you'll see a lot of the artists have been posting what they're gonna do, so we can just go ahead and get your Christmas shopping out of the way now. Just come on down. Also, don't, you know, come hungry, because we got a couple new restaurants, Slices Pint wasn't there last year, De Lucas is opening for the day, they're not usually open during the daytime, and we got food trucks, and there might be a beer garden that needs proceeds from, you know, anybody who can come out and help us, and I know certain people in the council will help make sure that happens. Nolan's one of the youth of El Segundo is gonna help us, he's got a little gift for you, he's gonna make sure you have that, and we just want to encourage everybody to come on out, it's nine to five, streets are closed, so come on out, we got pony rides, petting zoos, all that. So, see you Saturday on Richmond Street.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Gibbon, appreciate all you're doing for the community. All right, thanks Barry, always a great event, Fair on Richmond Street, and I know that you and Mike Early and Scott Nickel and many others have been working really hard on that event, so, thank you. All right, next up, we've got the LA Street Festival, September 20th and 21st, and we've got Deputy City Manager Barbara Voss, do you talk about that?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. So, I'll start with saying what you cannot do at the LA Street Festival, you cannot buy your holiday gifts at the LA Street Festival, and you cannot go to a beer garden. So I'm encouraging people to go to both events, but the LA Street Festival is happening on Friday, noon to nine, and Saturday, noon to nine, same time both days. They are out on Douglas right now, putting up the Magic Sky, which is this enormous tent, under which they will be playing three-on-three basketball. Douglas for the public, Douglas is closed from Atwood to Imperial Highway, so please use Nash and Maple to get around that area. There's signs out, detour routes, and we've posted on Facebook and on our website, so hopefully that won't cause too much inconvenience. Other things that will be happening at the LA Street Festival are three-on-three basketball, or, sorry, I already said that, esports, and food trucks, and music, and celebrities, which are YouTube stars that I've never heard of, but they'll be very big for, you know, that demographic. And there's gonna be award ceremonies, and it should be a really fun time, first time ever in El Segundo, so we will see how it goes, I hope everybody can be out there.
And what's the cost, Barbara?
It's free.
What is it?
Free.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, lastreetfestival.com to register, you do need to buy, not buy, you need to register and get a ticket to get in, but it's a free ticket.
Thank you very much, Ms. Voss, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Nickel?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Mayor Protem Persak?
Here.
Mayor Boiles?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Public Communications, five-minute limit per person, 30-minute limit total, please state your name and address if you'd like.
Good evening, folks. I'm not a very good speaker, I should be a marvelous speaker, but I'm not. I fumble and can't get my brain to what I wish to say. Thank you all for your efforts in behalf of El Segundo. They are well-meaning, I know, very, I know, or I say I know that, no, I do, I suspect that. I suspect you're well-meaning, I suspect you're not just taking care of yourselves, but you're taking care of the city, and you do a terrific job. I don't agree with you, but you're doing a terrific job. Oh, I'd like to get rid of, made notes tonight, and I can't even read them. Made notes tonight and cannot read them, okay. Oh, all right, the most important one for me is that the recognition and the acknowledgement that patriotism per se is not a virtue. I was brought up in Los Angeles public schools, and we were taught that patriotism was a great virtue. I suggest that it is, if you think about it and really concern yourself with the notion of patriotism, it is not a virtue. It is a concept by the leaders of a community to get its citizens to kill other people and avoid being killed themselves. So I'd like to get rid of, I'd like to get rid of this, the Pledge of Allegiance. Certainly a pledge of allegiance that continues, that contains the words "under God." I do not believe there is such a person, a thing, an object, and I'd like to get rid of that, that particular phrase from the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to get rid of the Pledge of Allegiance altogether, forget it. I've noticed in the course of time, wait a minute, let me, my name is Jack Axelrod, I live at 317 Richmond Street in El Segundo, I have lived there for just about exactly 20 years. In all the time I have lived there, I have never heard the word "climate crisis," those words "climate crisis," I have never heard those uttered by anybody on the city council. In spite of the fact that you all know that we are in a desperate climate, climate, I give up the word. I was listening to this 16-year-old girl from, is it okay to use the word "girl"? I'm using, I'm, I was listening to the words of the 16-year-old girl, Greta, from Norway. Remarkable individual, I hope you all heard her on KPFK, and if you don't listen to KPFK, maybe you should. It's the one station that we have, at least on occasion, that presents a rational, reasonable approach to civilization. How much time have I got?
You got two minutes, Mr. Axelrod.
Thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to have the seal of El Segundo redesigned. That seal up there, it just, it's incomprehensible, you can't see it from back here, and it doesn't mean anything, it doesn't say anything. the, where the first refinery for Chevron existed. I was, I was going to school at Berkeley at that time. I, also, I'd like to introduce myself a little bit. I am a licensed architect, or was, a licensed architect in Washington, in California, and in Maine. I have buildings in all, in those three states that I have designed. I was not a very successful architect, what's that?
No, ignore that, somebody's cellphone, you're good.
Oh, okay, thank you. I forgot where I was.
Talking about architect, you built in Maine.
Oh, yes, okay, giving some of my own, crediting some of my own stuff. I studied architecture at the University of California, I was a student there, I subsequently became licensed in the three states that I mentioned, I studied acting with arguably the most effective and astute teacher of acting in the United States, that's Uta Hagen, she died six, seven years ago. But all my work on stage, in front of television, I'm not very much on radio, is based on what I learned from her. I have taught for seven, in, in seven different universities in, in those depart, in the department of, in the, in the theater departments. I only hoped that I did not damage my students, maybe I didn't, maybe I actually helped them, I'd like to think so. I once volunteered for work here when I first got to El Segundo and was ignored.
Mr. Axelrod, your time is up? Yeah, sorry, sir.
Thank you all for your attention, and, I have a moment here, and thank you all for your attention, and thank you for the good things that you, that you do, obviously do, and take care of in El Segundo.
Thank you, Mr. Axelrod. We do have public communications at the end of the evening as well, we reinstated that, so you're welcome to come back if you'd like.
Has that, that's been restored then?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's on the agenda tonight, isn't it? Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Hello, and good evening, Mayor Boiles and councilmembers, thanks so much for your time tonight. I wanted to talk about something, it's item fourteen on tonight's agenda, so I wasn't sure if public hearing happens as it, does it planning commission?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, sorry, my name's Michelle Keldorf, I'm a resident, I am a planning commissioner, but I'm talking tonight strictly as a resident. Item fourteen is operating budget capital improvement program. It was something that planning commission discussed, but only in the context of zoning and land use. There are, there's an allocation, there are a couple of allocations, but specifically one for the Acacia Park and Pool on tonight's agenda, that would be approved as part of the overarching operating budget and capital improvement program. And, you know, I feel like I'm kind of up here every time that water's involved, which is not my intention, but I come talking about pools, it seems like most of all, so everyone has an issue, and this apparently is mine. By default, I was a swimmer for many years, my children participate in water polo programs and swimming programs in the city, and heavily utilize pools like Hilltop, The Plunge, and now the new Aquatic Center. I saw on the, the budget for that, for the Acacia Pool, it's 1.85 million, and I had some questions about it, and so I looked back on the, I believe it was the April 16th city council meeting, and I'm a little sheepish that I didn't attend that meeting, I think by that point we had discussed so many things, like the allocation of money to repair The Plunge, and allocation for the operating expense associated with the new Aquatic Center, that it really just kind of did slip under my radar. But what I noticed from that meeting was that there were two different scenarios on the docket, one was staff recommended to just address the park at a cost of, I think, around 900,000, or an alternative to repair and improve the pool as well, and that was closer to 1.8 million. It's, it feels like at a time where we're in a bit of a fiscal crisis, and we've obviously talked a lot about allocating resources to parks and community facilities, we do have three very heavily utilized active facilities now in the city of El Segundo, namely The Plunge, Hilltop, and the new Aquatic Center. Those, additionally, The Plunge and The Aquatic Center are able to monetize themselves to some degree, I mean, that's the intent, to reduce operating expenses. In looking at the staff report, I was taken by the fact that Acacia Pool has very small usage, especially in comparison to those programs. So I think it was twenty swimmers per day, two days a week, for twelve weeks, and that, when you looked at a $25,000 operating budget, was about $50 a swimmer per day. If you were to ask a swimmer, if they were to pay $50 a day for use of that pool, I would doubt that they would. So I understand that we're a community really trying to serve as many people as possible, I feel like it's your job to have an overarching picture of what's going on in the city, and to try to allocate funds as fiscally responsibly as possible. I would encourage you to look at that line item again, and see if there is an opportunity to look at cost savings, if not, completely taking the pool off the table. Additionally, there was one other line item that, again, came up at planning commission, but we didn't really have an opportunity to dig into, so at the time at planning commission there was a million-dollar allocation to both increased city hall security and energy
on here. Do we have any items, colleagues, that would, you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
efficiency, and I believe that that's been separated. I was happy to see that that total volume went down, I think it's 125,000 for city
I would like to pull number seven and number eleven.
hall security and 500,000 for new windows to improve energy efficiency.
Seven, eleven.
I would appreciate if there was a bit of discussion about what that entails, just
Sounds lucky.
Okay, thank you, sir.
because so many of the other items on there are pretty self-explanatory.
Anyone else? No other pulls, okay.
Any sort of cost-benefit analysis has been done on what the cost savings will be from
So I would like to ask that we approve the agenda order, and we also waive the full
new windows throughout.
reading of ordinances resolutions noting that we're gonna discuss items seven and eleven
Again, we just have to, as judiciously as possible, use our financial resources to
first, would someone like to move that?
serve the greatest number of people in the community.
So moved.
I appreciate your time, and I look forward to the discussion, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Keldorf. Five, zero, thank you, all right. So, we're gonna go to item seven, Dr. Brand.
Item seven, we talked about this at our previous meeting, and I, I'm supportive of the city manager delegating a signature authority, I think that's the right thing to do. I'm just not okay with where he wants to send it to, because that employee has a particular expertise in marketing, event planning, communications, that's important to us, is a main goal for our city. I'd rather see the, the delegation go to the, the business department, finance department, for example, so that he could get the support he needs in a better place.
Thanks, Dr. Brand, would you allow me the opportunity to get approval on the other items real quick, I missed that step?
Sure.
Okay. We need to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, okay. Thanks, Dr. Brand, thank you, Tracy, city clerk. All right, so, Mr. Mitnick, would you like to address Dr. Brand's concern?
This is a paperwork issue to, involving the review of documents that require the city manager's authority, and the ability to delegate that authority to another employee in your office is, is commonplace throughout city governments in the United States, so we're, we're just asking, the request is to have that authority, it's not just financial items, it's personnel items, purchase items, budget items, signing of documents, very routine business. So, I think the request is what it is, and we ask your consideration, if not, then I guess just remove it in its entirety, because there are, some of the things will involve approving things that happen in the finance department, so obviously your finance director wouldn't have approved stuff involving his own department. And there are a number of items that the city manager's asked to sign off on, that over time I'm gonna push back to the department heads anyhow, so that concern will be cured over time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Nickel?
I think to Don's point, Mr. Mitnick, we're just trying to understand, and if you can lay out the playing field for us, that, you know, day in the life, normal operations, how it works, because this, this council approved a title change for Ms. Voss, because one of our strategic goals is communication. You know, her and her staff put together a very robust communication plan, and what it would take, and how many employees it would take, and so I think the concern is if more work is pushed or delegated to her, will that take her away from some of the other things that we're hoping for her to accomplish? And, I mean, if the answer is no, it won't affect that work, then I think this isn't a big deal, but without us understanding exactly what it is, it's, I think that's what Dr. Brand's looking for, some clarity.
It will not have a negative impact on that.
Okay, looks like that's it up here, I, I would like to move approval of item seven. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three, two. Okay, Dr. Brand, item eleven?
Right, item eleven, I want to, I pulled off because I want to praise the HR office for taking this action. When I left the council in 2012, I was in the VSP program through the Teamsters, and it was impossible to get any communications going with them, they were terrible, and so I'm glad that feedback from former employees and employees to HR has resulted in now a new relationship that should serve our employees here much, much better. Thank you for doing this, I move approval.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you. All right, item twelve. This is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing, to continue the public hearing regarding introduction of an ordinance amending the El Segundo municipal code to establish a public art requirement or in lieu fee, otherwise known as a percent for arts fee, and a cultural development fund, this item will be continued to the regular city council meeting of October 15, 2019. Item thirteen. This is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding a public hearing regarding, the annual update, that's okay, to the master, just got me off guard, that's all, update to the master fee schedule and amending current fees and service charges and various other amendments to the city of El Segundo fee schedule. This does not include water rates, sewer rates, and development impact fees. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
None has been received.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open, Mr. Mitnick, who will make the presentation?
Or your finance director.
All right, good evening, Mayor, city councilmembers. So if you recall, last year, right around this time, maybe a few months prior to this time, I brought before you the cost allocation plan and the fee study, it was a comprehensive one, and the city looked at, council looked at all the fees and how they're being subsidized, and we decided to move forward with the recommendations put before you last year. And what I did commit to you last year is that we would bring the fee schedule to you on an annual basis to look at adjusting it by CPI factor, or looking at individual fees and adjusting them accordingly. So last year, our adjustments increased revenue by about $600,000. This year, with the CPI adjustments, we're looking at about $130,000 increased additional revenue. And I do have a consultant here from Revenue Cost Specialist, Eric.
Joe, can you just clarify, when you say increasing revenue, there should be a direct offset and increase in expenses, right? This is a...
Correct, so they're, they're correlated with the costs of providing that service, absolutely.
Thank you, yeah, welcome, please, thanks.
And I don't, Eric, did you have anything on that you wanted to add to it, or?
Unless council has any questions.
Okay, any questions from the council? There are a couple items I think of concern, right? The, the first two, I think, warrant some discussion, possibly relating to block party permit, or some other, at least the things that struck me. Those are the only two differences, are they not, Scott?
It's a public hearing, I think you need...
Oh, yeah, sorry, 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 thank you. Okay, public hearing, that's it for the presentation, Joe, pretty much?
Yes, unless council has any specific questions.
Okay. Public hearing is now open for public input.
My name is Jack Axelrod, thank you very much for the opportunity of adding to my confused comments at, when I first stood up. Chevron, I'd like to ask you all to divorce yourself from all relationships...
Jack, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off. This is specifically related to the fee schedule, we're gonna do public communications in probably an hour and four, fifteen minutes, if I had to guess, if you wanna stick around.
Very sorry, thank you very much.
That's okay, that's all right, thank you. Okay, any other public input? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, okay, council discussion.
I'm glad you brought up the block party thing, it's, we had a subsequent email, it was information asked of staff, how many block party permits are pulled on average, and I think the answer was 25, correct? Right, everyone get that email?
Yes.
Yeah, so by my math, this increase would bring in an additional $3,125 to the city's bottom line, and what's that, what's that old saying, is the, is the juice worth, worth the squeeze? And I think the answer on this is no, in my personal opinion. Block parties are typically held around Fourth of July season, and it's a collaborative thing with the neighbors, and, you know, we can discuss in detail the fully burdened rate on things, but I think certain things it makes perfect sense on, but something for the residents, I think we leave it at 25, and thank you for obviously doing the work and bringing it to our attention, I just, I don't think it's worth making that change.
Yeah, these two particular fees, for whatever reason, got passed over last year, otherwise it would, this would have been included, this recommendation would have been included in last year's study, so now we're just bringing this to you, so it's a matter of, council did adopt a policy for full cost recovery, obviously, so that's what we're presenting here tonight, and council does have the option to make whatever policy decision it wishes.
Did, I'm sorry, I must have missed the email that included the 25, did it have a mention of the number of special event permits? Like, the $400... Thirty-six, I think? Thirty-six, okay, thanks.
I believe it was 31, I believe.
And what's typically involved, I know, you wanna, I'm gonna ask real quick, Councilman Pimentel, what's typically involved, like, how do you, how would you define the special event permit, what qualifies as that?
I'm gonna ask the revenue manager, Juliana, the mayor's to come up here and, to answer that question.
So special events permits are, permits that are issued for events that are not city events, so it could be events in private or public property, and the cost of the permit involves pretty much going department by department to check and coordinate police, fire, public works, for street closures, for some type of traffic management, and other, and all of the other functions related to this specific event. So putting barricades, moving traffic signs, posting additional signs, posting banners, so those are, I know, like, coordinations that are done through the process.
So it, I think the email said businesses, but this would apply to residents too if they wanted to amplify music, correct?
So an amplified sound permit is separated from the special events permit, and it's something that we are looking towards, like, just combining on the next fee study, that when you pull in a special events permit, the amplified sound permit's gonna be included, and all that we're gonna do is just notify the police. So what today the amplified sound permit is used for is so, the police department can also have a heads-up in case you start receiving calls, you know, for some type of, like, loud noise, that there was a permit issued, so they know the start and end time of that event.
Okay, while I have you, what are the triggers for a business or a resident to have to pull the special event permit? What specifically is the criteria that...
Good evening. So special events permits are permits that are issued for events that are not city events, so it could be events in private or public property. And the cost of the permit involves pretty much going department by department to check and coordinate police, fire, public works, for street closures, for some type of traffic management, and other, and all of the other functions related to this specific event. So putting barricades, moving traffic signs, posting additional signs, posting banners, so those are, you know, like, coordinations that are done through the process.
So it, I think the email said businesses, but this would apply to residents too if they wanted to amplify music, correct?
So an amplified sound permit separated from the special events permit, and it's something that we are looking towards, like, just combining on the next fee study, that when you pull in a special events permit, the amplified sound permit's going to be included, and all that we're going to do is just notify the police. So what today the amplified sound permit is used for is so, the police department can also have a heads up in case you start receiving calls, you know, for some type of, like, loud noise, that there was a permit issued, so they know the starting and end time of that event.
Okay, while I have you, what are the triggers for a business or a resident to have to pull the special event permit? What specifically is the criteria that indicates that they have to do that?
If they wanted to have an event on some type of, like, public right of way, so on a street, on a block, and it's an event that is not just like a block party, and might include, you know, like, inviting people, inviting guests from, you know, like, other locations, like, for example, the Run for Education, when you're pulling, like, an event together, and you're inviting other members of the community and other people to come and participate on the event. The art walk is another one that's, you also pulls a special event permit.
Or if there's tenting, like, for instance, if you have, like, large tents, like, the gala has to pull...
What about, what about private property?
So, private property, also, we do regulate, we do also request a special events permit, and it's more because of the condition of the use of the property, if it's going to be appropriate for that type of event.
I guess I'm struggling with, when you're talking about cost recovery, surely a right-of-way issue that affects the entire, I don't know, square mile or square half mile for art walk as compared to hosting something on your private property, and really the only difference is the number of people you're going to have there for that evening, and some amplified music. Seems to me that the requirements internally for us from a cost standpoint are very different. I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, there is a separation from, so when you're pulling a permit for an event, so the cost of blocking the right of way, like, blocking, for example, a street or like a part of the sidewalk, that cost is separated from the issuance of the permit. The cost of the issuance of the permit is related to us meeting with the applicant, going over the entire process, the entire event, got to remember that when you're doing a permit like this, the event doesn't start on that day, it started like several days prior, so the coordination with the police department to determine, so we're going to have to allocate this number of officers to be able to block the, you know, like, the street, public works, we'll have to post signs throughout the city advising that no parking is going to be allowed, so there is a coordination pre, during, and post event that's part of this application, this permit process.
Got it. So it's a base, six hundred is the base? Okay, thank you. Councilman Pimentel?
I think that, generally speaking, we would want to encourage people to pull permits for things, and to be good neighbors, and I think what we need to be mindful of with these things, it's very difficult, if I'm having a birthday party at noon and I want amplified music, and I realize that might annoy my neighbors, I want to pull a permit, and the idea of the fully burdened cost of that is incorporating the total cost of employment of the individual who is handing me a piece of paper, is something that's really difficult for citizens to swallow, and they start doing, and my concern would be they start doing the cost benefit of, well, I know the first time I have a party ordinance violation, I just get a warning, or I spent $155 on amplified sound permit, so I'm just going to take the warning, sort of thing. I just want to make sure that, while I'm incredibly empathetic to total cost recovery, because those are subsidies we provide, you know, that is exactly what we are doing, we want to make sure that we find a way to make this rational and reasonable to the people who are going to pull them, because we want them ultimately to be fully permitted with what they do. So I think that's a bit of the struggle, you know, with block parties, for $382, it's very difficult to tell somebody on a street that's been doing a block party for eons that the cost of putting up two sawhorses and a piece of paper is $382. It is, I mean, we can rationalize that to them, it is, it's just a difficult conversation to have. So I'm a bit torn.
I have a question about the private special event permit. So something like the Run for Education or the Fair on Richmond Street, which is happening this weekend. I've seen the invoices that the city sends for those events, and there's charges, like, for the use of the trucks to deliver the sawhorses, for rental of the sawhorses, that's all on top of whatever this permitting fee is, correct?
Correct.
So then, what exactly is the permitting fee? Because if they're paying, if they're being charged à la carte for, you know, the fire marshal reviewing the plans, and if it's all broken down à la carte, then what's lumped into this? And are those, are those two things that are happening simultaneously that are being double charged essentially?
No, so the cost of the permit is pretty much the cost of city staff to coordinate the entire process. So it would be from the pre-meeting, when we start deciding how the event is going to, you know, like, how this is going to happen, and then we create an outline for the event, then we meet again with the departments, so police would meet with public works, coordinate all the traffic controls, we would be meetings throughout the pre-preparation of the event, during the event, you know, if there's anything else that's missed, and then post-event, when we sit down and do now all of the billing, so now, how many hours of city staff was used, all the resources that were used, so there's time consumed there to prepare for the closing, the closing of that permit.
Thank you, that makes sense.
But, what doesn't make sense, though, is, you know, if it's just a little block party, they don't have to have all these meetings and premium, like, there's, there's different scales of...
But the block, block party permit is different than the special events permit, two different permits.
Another question, you may not have this answer, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it ahead of time, of those thirty-one that we get per year, how many of those are nonprofits? Nonprofits that are raising money for, within our community?
So remember that on the special events permit, the majority of the events that we assign, that they have to pull a special events permit, they also have been already granted by city council some type of subsidy on the total of the event. So we, some of those events, you know, like, we do bill, you know, we do create a full city cost for the event, but then we grant them some type of, like, a subsidy, seventy-five percent for some of the events, so they only pay twenty-five percent of all costs, some events only fifty percent, some others, you know, like, twenty-five percent, and some of the events, there is no cost to the applicant, and the city just subsidize the entire cost. So that permit fee, that $400, you know, that we are proposing, which is currently is the $60, would also be part of this, you know, a schedule of, you know, like, discounted when we close the final billing.
So, in this scenario, say someone's paying twenty-five percent, they would only be paying one hundred of that four hundred?
Correct.
Because the way the math worked out was that four hundred was already discounted from the fully burden. So we're going to discount it twice, right? Just making sure?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I, if I have a special, no, if I have a venue in town and I do a wedding, does that, is that this permit, or is that a different permit?
For a wedding, if you're doing on pri, so if you're going to be, if it's going to be...
Private property.
On private property is a different process with, and I think that's more regulated by planning, so I don't know what, like, what would be the requirements for them in the case of a wedding, unless, so, unless the wedding would impact traffic, for example, they would put valet on the streets, and then we would have to do some traffic control for parking, and then I think that at that point, there will be a need for a private property, special events permit.
Any other questions?
This is similar but different, this may speak a bit to the overarching process we went through. We got to note as well that there were several categories that were removed as well, through different permitting fees. Do you happen to know what those were offhand?
For the categories I do...
I saw some that were still listed as we no longer provide this service, some of those placeholders, like the Smoky Hollow piece, is that, is that the ones that were...
Right, so some, some of those permits have, some of the services have been removed, because they have either been combined with other services, so there is no needed to do two charges, so we kind of eliminated one, because a process now is kind of more efficient and incorporate both of the, you know, like, the tasks. So, yes, there's several of those that have been removed, so we taking a lot of the charges out of the schedule as well.
No, I'm very happy to hear that, I mean, simplification for, for residents who are pulling things is, is an enormous boon to the process, they don't feel like they're having to get a permit for the vehicle and a permit for this, things that can be simplified and consolidated, I think it's, it's well worth noting. And I think it's worth noting as well that a number of these fees were either minorly adjusted by CPI, or, or were in fact reduced, like, like the amplified sound one, which dropped a hundred dollars.
Several library fees that are being eliminated as well.
Correct. I think, let's, I think Mr. Mitnick might have a suggestion here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in listening to the discussion, I pulled the consultant outside to get some clarification, asking what are, what does he see as the typical block party and special event fees out there for cities of our size? Before commenting on that, though, staff did a good job, and so did the consultant looking at the full cost recovery rate, so that's good. What typically, our consultant says he sees out there for block parties, anywhere from no charge to fifty dollars, so it looks like most cities deliberately make a decision to not charge full cost for that. Then for special event permits, when it's involving private property, fifty to $150, public property, five hundred to $2,500. So suggestion would be, leave the fees for these two as they are, and then next year we can come back and with a recommendation to zero in on a more appropriate block party fee and special event permit fee with the two different categories, one for private property, one for public. The revenue impact is relatively minor, and if council's okay, we could do that.
Sounds reasonable to me. What do my colleagues think?
To be clear, you're saying leave it where they are at twenty-five and sixty?
Yeah, that's right. Because upon reflection, we should have had a little bit more crisp for you, and we should have presented a, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation, nobody did anything wrong, but we, for these, because they're sensitive fees, that we could have had some data for you about, well, what do other similar cities do in this environment?
Well, it's a perfect example that making policy cannot answer every question, right? So this is a situation where a block party and who it's going to impact, and the fiscal impact versus the personal impact with the community and what the overarching goal is, the policy just isn't a very good way of applying it here, I guess you could say.
I would take my hat off, though, to, to finance on this, I mean, this is exactly what we've asked them to do.
I mean, this is, and the previous council asked them to do, give us cost recovery, don't
give us the sunshine rate, give us the real cost of doing business, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think that that is, it is, it is a, not an easy mantle to wear, and I appreciate you doing that.
Right, and really, this item is about looking at the whole master fee schedule holistically. These two particular permit items were just called out because they were not looked at last year, you know, now looking forward, we probably should have just left it alone and brought this block party and the private event, special event, next year, but, you know, the whole item before you is really to look at the, the entire master fee schedule holistically, adjusting it by CPI, as I committed to you last year that we would do, city has never done before. So that's really the intent of this item, not these two specific items, the block party or the special event permit.
I have one more piece of confusion, unsurprisingly, but, and this may be one for the chief as well, we have the, a DUI processing fee, and is that something that we owe to the county, so we have to charge the individual here? Is that, is the nature of that, and are there other, sort of, criminal ills that have a significant impact to us that we should be looking at cost recovery? It just struck me that that's, of all the menaces we have here, be it property crime and whatnot, are there other ones that append special cost to the city? I know we have misdemeanor booking, but not felony booking, which I didn't know that I understood.
So the DUI is allowed under, under statute for us to recover costs associated with the DUI, does not allow us to recover for, for other criminal violations?
Does that include, is that only if someone feels, fails a field sobriety test, or is it any if they're under the influence of narcotics or anything like that, is it after blood tests, or are there other things, just, it seems to me like, if there's, if there's a special fee that we could append to criminal behavior, like, are there other, there's no other ones that we can do?
There isn't, and that would be upon conviction for, for the DUI.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that. Yeah, Council, Dr. Brand?
Yeah, I don't really care what other cities do with the block parties, I'm interested in El Segundo, and the block parties have really been an important part of our culture. We're losing a sense of community here with the increase in the price of homes, and we're not where we used to be. Those of us who've been here a long, long time know that. It's important that we keep the block parties as, as a part of our culture, so that we don't carelessly drop something that's really worked to bring families together across neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Brand. All right, if there's no more council discussion, we do have a proposed resolution in front of us that the city attorney will read by title only, and just to reiterate, it does have a CPI increase in there that's incorporated into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed fees. Any further discussion? Okay, city attorney will read the resolution by title only.
Mayor and council, a resolution of the City of El Segundo establishing a schedule of fees and charges for recovering costs incurred for providing various city services is ready for adoption.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, right?
Did we need to make the...
Clarification on the...
Clarification on those two fees? That's what I was hesitating on, sorry.
I think that was in the record, the...
Yeah, just making sure.
Yes, for, for the record, the block party and private special event fees will remain as they are at twenty-five and sixty dollars.
Thank you, all right. Item fourteen. This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing regarding a public hearing adopting a resolution approving the proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty operating budget, capital improvement program budget, GAN appropriations limit, general fund reserve policy, and economic uncertainty reserve policy. Madam Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
We did receive written communication.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Mitnick, who will make the presentation?
Finance Director Joe Laleo.
So the item for you tonight is the proposed fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, operating capital improvement budget. So the total proposed appropriations for all funds for nineteen twenty is $137.7 million. The top three appropriation categories consume about ninety-four point two percent of the budget, so the top one being the general fund at about fifty-eight point six percent, followed by the enterprise funds at twenty-six point five percent, enterprise funds are the water, wastewater, which is also referred to as a sewer, golf course, and the solid waste fund. And then the third is the internal service funds at nine point one percent, so those combined about ninety-four point two percent of the total city's budget. This is the preliminary, I'm sorry, the proposed general fund revenues totaling seventy-six point seven million dollars. It is a two point two million dollar increase over the prior year's budget. And just to hit on some key items here, the three top increases are the property tax revenue by seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, the business license tax, seven hundred and ten thousand, and the TOT, or the transit occupancy tax, by seven hundred thousand. The largest decrease would be the franchise, franchise tax, and that's basically the payment we get, the annual payment we get from SoCal Gas and Edison, and it's the Edison payment that's going down, so that's a decrease of about seven hundred thousand. So the slide reflects the top general fund revenue sources. Again, TOT being the largest revenue source now, twenty percent of general fund revenues, followed by the business tax at sixteen percent, sales tax at fifteen percent, and then property tax at twelve percent. So those four represent about sixty-three percent of the general fund revenue. Most cities typically have property tax and sales tax at that amount, so we do have a diverse base of revenues, which is good. The slide represents a five-year history of the top six general fund revenues, and key takeaways here are the TOT, so if we go back to fourteen, fifteen, this dark purple line here, TOT was number five as far as revenue sources, the general fund, and fast forward to sixteen, seventeen, with passage of Measure B, increasing the rate from eight percent to twelve percent, and new hotels coming online now, TOT is the number one revenue source, so going from number five to number one, just over five years. And then another key takeaway, the utility user tax, UUT tax, so going back to fourteen, fifteen, it was number three revenue source in the general fund, actually peaked at nine million dollars in thirteen, fourteen, and has been declining since, and now it went from number three to number five. General fund appropriations, total appropriations for, proposed appropriations for FY nineteen twenty is eighty million, seven hundred and eighty-two, five hundred and forty dollars. Key takeaways here, police and fire represent about forty-eight percent of the operating budget, followed by public works at about ten percent, so top three represent about fifty-eight percent of the general fund budget. Any specific questions here? Any specific questions here? This is a snapshot of personnel costs. So personnel costs of that $80.7 million general fund budget, personnel costs are about $60 million. This represents about 77% of the total proposed budget. Salaries represent about 58%. And then we have pension costs, 22%, and then group insurance at 12%, and the remaining at about 20%. And what we did this year, as we had mentioned in previous budget study sessions, a 5% vacancy rate. So that 77% that I mentioned typically would be 80, 81% of the general fund budget, but with 5% vacancy brings it down, personnel costs about 77% of the budget. Okay, proposed general fund
Joe, so that's, that's $3 million on workman's comp per year?
That is correct. Number one, I'm sorry, the proposed general fund reserve strategy. So staff is recommending a general fund reserve, so currently, the current year rent is 19%, we are recommending bringing that down to 17%. And placing that 2% reduction, which is about $1,560,000, into the city's pension trust. Pension trust currently has about $2.6 million, so that would bring the balance up to about $4.2 million if council approves this. The proposed pension strategy for 1920, so we've been proactively looking at this for the last two years. This will be the third year in a row that we're taking strategic moves, reducing pension liabilities. A complete fresh start, which is also known as a refinance, of the police classic pension from a 25-year to a 20-year amortization, that will save about $2.7 million interest payments to CalPERS. A complete fresh start of the fire classic pension plan from a 26-year to a 20-year amortization, that will shave off about $2.5 million interest payments to PERS. So combined, total savings of $5 and a quarter million. If you combine that with the prior two years' strategic moves we've done, that will bring total savings of $11.7 million to the city that we've done in pension strategies. So the capital improvement program. In your handout, you do have an attachment A. I'm sorry, attachment F. Attachment F is the three-year capital improvement program. And there's a sub-attachment F. So what I have up here on my slide is that sub-attachment F. I couldn't fit the entire CIP program up here, so this is just the new funding. We do have $2,010,000 total enterprise and special revenue funds being allocated to CIP for next year. Total general fund of $2,749, and total of all new sources of 4 point, roughly 4.8 million. But if you go to your attachment F. Attachment F, some key items I would like to point out there is number seven, so it's 7A, B, and C, the Acacia Park construction. That is $1,850,000 that we have in here, per council direction. Number 14, the teen center upgrades, which includes a skate park and basketball courts, $800,000, that's per council direction. Number 16, the city hall window replacement at $500,000. Number 18, the fiber vault lid replacement at $300,000. And those are deteriorating lids throughout the city streets that need to be replaced. It's a liability hazard. Rec park restroom rehabilitation, that's number 23, $200,000. So council did ask staff to apply some CIP funds towards restoring the rec park restrooms, that's $200,000. Number 27, city hall security improvements at $125,000. And number 28, like, library park project at $120,000. Is there any questions on the CIP listing?
I do. I, maybe we talked about it before, but number nine, fiber vault lid replacements, can you just explain what that is, $300,000?
Okay, number nine up here on the slide presentation, also if anybody at home is looking at attachment F, the three-year CIP program.
Number 18.
That would be number 18, fiber vault lid replacement at $300,000. So it's, city owns the vault lids that are on the streets, the right of ways, that's covering up the city fiber. And a lot of those vault lids are deteriorating, corroding, and it poses a major liability hazard. So those do need to be replaced.
And if I can interject, there are nine of them, so they're about $35,000 a pop.
How long have they been in place?
Maybe Mr. Berkman might be able to address that.
We haven't had fiber that long.
I'm not sure how long they've been in place, but the issue is that they were incorrectly designed, so they're not up to the load standards. And the loads of the traffic are what are breaking them down quicker than we expect also.
So can we use any money we get from traffic or from the, from the funds that we get for
SB1 and whatnot?
SB1?
It's not really roadway improvement related, they're more of a utility infrastructure.
Are we hiring the same company that gave us the current lids?
Let's hope not. I mean, because how, they haven't been in that long, correct? I mean
I don't know.
Okay.
I got a question about Acacia. So I think the number's 1.8 million, but on here I see $700,000, just a couple of years.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at attachment F, the three-year CIP program in your packet, it's 7A under the wastewater enterprise fund at $200,000. 7B under grants and special revenue funds at $200,000. And then 7C under the general fund of $1,450,000, so that totals $1,850,000.
Did we, I know we were, one of the points of discussion last meeting, I think it was last meeting, was whether or not we were going to get the grant. Did we get the grant that we were looking for for Acacia?
So there is a $200,000 grant that the city will get from Prop 68, and there's another competitive grant that the city applied for. We won't know till January. So if we do get that grant, then we can come back to council and reappropriate these funds.
I can't remember, what's the dollar amount that that one might be? $200?
1.3 million is what we applied for.
What's the probability? I know it's kind of a crap shoot, but any idea what? Extremely likely?
It's extremely, yeah, I mean, you have hundreds of cities applying for it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the CIP? The windows replacement, can you talk a little bit about that? I know we had public comments on that, but also just help us understand what we're doing there, please. Mr. Berkman, thanks.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council, the city hall windows replacement was a priority identified in the citywide facility condition assessment. And for city hall, it was slated to be done. We have the single-pane steel windows that have been in there since 1955, since the building was constructed. And they're looking to, we're looking to replace them with dual-pane glazed aluminum windows. And within the F, the report, it was a construction cost of about $375,000. We know it's going to be more, and taking out old windows in, that are encased in old structures. The unforeseen conditions, as you've heard from myself and other public works directors before, we want to make sure we have enough contingency in there to deal with what we're going to hopefully not find, but, but no, we likely will.
I know a lot of those windows, particularly, I think your office got, maybe mayor's office, there's like, almost looks like rot underneath the windows. Is that going to be addressed as well?
We would have to, right. So when you get into, you take the windows out, you'll deal with the structure of the building, of the opening. And certainly from a security standpoint, you know, the locks are very old, they're, they're obviously drafty and overall a good thing, high priority to do for, for city hall, per the recommendations of our consultant.
And then when we did the assessment, where did this, the windows weren't on the initial list, correct? I mean, where, as far as this has been moved forward?
They were within the three-year plan, as far as projecting out throughout the entire citywide program. This came to light as a higher priority due to the, excuse me, the security issues. So it's also a security issue as much as a condition assessment.
If I could add just one comment to that, a security issue for multiple venues. One of my staff members had a creature come in his office over the weekend, and when it came in on Monday, that creature was there. Because there's, there's space between the windows and the space cannot close. So it's not just in his office, there's other offices that have that same gap in the windows.
Thank you. The, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to talk about the Acacia Park just a little bit further. I would just like to maybe implore one final time, my colleagues, to consider, even though we have to study, do another assessment on the plunge, to, instead of waiting for the plunge, to accelerate those dollars into next year, that million dollars. And go back to the original proposed park recommendation from Wrexham Park. And put those funds to better use.
I think the best way to discuss it, and I would love for us to have an open discussion on this, is we tend to look at items under a microscope, each one à la carte. And we're asked to formulate an opinion on each item à la carte without actually, say, like zooming out to blimp level and looking at what is our overall master plan or goal for our parks and recreation facilities, our park and recreation programming, so on and so forth. I had a thought that ran into my head when, can't answer the question about the, the grant as being very competitive, and many other cities are there, and I'm thinking, well, if I'm looking at a grant from a city that's asking for a fourth pool, when they've just installed a world-class aquatic center, I, I don't think I'm stamping approved on that. Just, it seems that a fourth pool seems a bit surplus. You know, I guess I'm, I'm in between on, on this issue. I see that that is a very dense populated area, and the pool's always been there, so we should keep the pool there. And if we take that approach to everything that we do, then we're always going to just keep making decisions upon decisions upon decisions based upon what decisions were made prior to us sitting up here. I think if we look at the whole park and where we would rather see that money spent, I would say that I would rather see it spent elsewhere. Under that same notion, you know, resident at home might be looking at this, saying, you guys are going to spend $500,000 on city hall when you've talked about potentially looking at what is city hall going to look like in the future, and you're going to spend half a million dollars on that, but you're not willing to spend that half a million dollars on our pool that we've always had access to. So I think that we should just have an open chat.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the windows, you've seen the windows, right?
Oh, I know, they're terrible.
They're, they're 55. I mean, we've certainly got our money's worth out of those windows. I had the same concern about, you know, are we going to rebuild city hall? It's one of our strategic priorities. I know it's going to take some time. I'm more concerned about the security issue at this point. I mean, I look at that plunge and think we have a, like, a monument in our town that was built as part of the great works projects, right? And why wouldn't we accelerate the use, like beautifying that incredible facility that's got such a storied legacy? Instead, we're talking about building a park that's going to get occasional use in the summer by a handful of residents.
Mayor, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Can you ask for a public comment and then close, and then you guys can discuss?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, there's so much more. We have to get through still the reserve policy, uncertain, economic uncertainty. We're just getting started. I think we're, can we do public input after that? Okay. So any other, can we continue on the CIP discussion now? Okay, what, I don't want to, I don't want to upset the city clerk over here. Any other comment on the CIP? Dr. Brand?
Yeah, upon reflection, I am at the point here where I agree with your comments, Mayor. I just don't think the use there justifies the expense.
I'm going to also concur. I feel that that money could be better used at the plunge and to accelerate the renovation of the plunge.
I feel like I'm in Time Bandits, where they just keep doing the same thing over and over and over again. It's a wonder that people get frustrated working with the city because we have the same conversation, then we all get together and wonder why things take eight years to do. So to that end, I think, and this might be a question for works, but if we had $5 million to throw at a specific project on that, that doesn't mean it gets done in one year. These projects are phased, and there's only a certain amount of money that you can spend in one year. So if we took everything off of there and put it at the plunge, that does not mean we would have a new plunge in a year. We would just have spent $400,000 and be sitting in a pot of money we're staring at. Now, if, I have little interest in revisiting the Acacia Park piece. I am willing to do so. It's important to remember that the city built specific amenities at specific times for specific purposes, right? And Hilltop and Acacia were there to serve very young children in an aquatic, they, they have zero to do with the plunge, and they have zero to do with the aquatic center, which do very different things. Now, we quite wisely starved Acacia because we knew we were going to have to dig it up and replace the pump. So it's a little bit disingenuous to look at the numbers of people participating in a park that was rundown and overgrown. It would be, I mean, Valley Park looks gorgeous right now, right? But that was in the same boat three years ago. I mean, it looked terrible, and it was full of cats. Maybe if you like cats, you'd like to go to Valley Park then. But the point being that they then turn around and use numbers that were artificially depressed by the poor state that we put that park into, and then wonder why people weren't going there, is a bit of a, of a poor reflection of data gather. And I would say that park serves a very specific purpose for people who are not in a position to take their children to the aquatic center because they are under three and are probably uninterested in pushing a stroller all the way to Hilltop. So that is an amenity that is there to serve a specific group and a specific populace, and I think that it would be, it would be somewhat, I don't know the right term without being too pejorative of us, to swipe that pool under dubious circumstance and tell people, well, you can go play water polo with your three-year-old at Wiseburn. That's just not the way to do it. So that pool is there for young swimmers, there's a lot of them over there, and I think, given the sort of amenities we have at Hilltop, I have no doubt that they would use it.
Thank you. Couple things. One is while we would not be able to necessarily spend all that money in year one, would we, should we accelerate the funds towards the plunge? We'd certainly have money earmarked for that use, which we don't have right now. We don't have enough money for the plunge. Secondarily, we originally told estimates of somewhere around $500,000 for that pool when it first became, came before us. Now we're talking about 1.8 million. Thirdly, the number of participants at Hilltop, what is that number? And I was under the impression that the numbers we were given of 20 to 25 participants at Acacia were measured when we were running the pool, not necessarily in the last couple of years, the running average. Is that not correct? That is correct, thank you. So we have less than a mile away, another pool that is pretty much the same and better facility, bigger space. I just, I just can't, I don't understand how we, as fiduciaries, can justify doing that. We have so many other projects that we've got to get done, and we've got our first structural deficit ahead of us within 18 months. So I hear where you're coming from, Chris. I know there'll be a contingency of people over there that are upset and that are put out by it, but we got to look out for the best interest of the entire city.
I mean, there's an element of where you sit is where you stand, right? And it's, it's, to the undying agony of people with young children is that they do not have often time available to show up at public meetings. And those of us who have children who are older and are free to do so prioritize things like the teen center. So if this city council meeting was all held during naptime, I don't doubt that we'd have plenty of people telling us they don't care about the teen center and we should build that pool. But that's just not the way that municipalities and body rhythms work. I, I think that we are doing a disservice to people if we told them, you don't get your pool for a while because we've got to dig it up for a pump, and then it'll only take a year, and then it takes two years, and then, no, we decided it's too expensive, we already got other pools that you're never going to use.
I think if you, if you presented it to a resident that lives in that area, that, hey, so we're looking at the budget and the cost for that, hey, so we're looking at the budget and the cost for re, you know, putting this park back together and with the pool it's X and without the pool it's Y, and they're going to say, oh, hold on a second. A pool that's three feet deep, all the way across, that's freezing cold all the time, that's open for 12 weeks during the summer, that hardly, I've, I've never seen it full, it's hardly ever used. And it's only used by children from the age of, let's say, birth to three, tops. Because once they start moving, they're going to Hilltop if they want to run around, play and have fun. It, I think if you presented them with that, they'd say, you guys are crazy to spend that much money on that. Now, obviously, it's all relative because then they're going to compare that to other monies that we're spending. So to your point, I, I mean, we can belabor this and we can make wonderfully crafted arguments for keeping the pool and we can make beautifully crafted arguments for eliminating the pool. Uh, I think that this thing went off the rails at the, I want to, I, it was like the August 16th meeting because the Recreation and Parks Commission, following our lead of trying to be, you know, fiduciaries, like, it's just, it's not getting the use and it's not in the future plans of our recreation. I mean, now we've appointed, now maybe not us directly appointed these people, but there are five Recreation and Park Commissioners that spoke about this. They are supposed to be our, you know, experts in the parks realm and they recommended to move forward with the park without the pool because they felt that there was enough aquatics programming offered everywhere else that would include the little kids. So.
On the presumption that people are going to take their little kids to it. I think it's one of those things, people forget the hassle factor involved. That is why we had two youth pools in the city, because you want one within walking distance. If we made the same argument that the teen center was not being used, what we would say is, well, that's because the teen center is in woeful condition, so no one wants to use it. That's the exact same issue that we had. Hilltop was not in delightful shape 10 years ago, right? It's in wonderful shape now, so there are a lot of people play there because we replaced the playground, right? It is a wonderful place to participate. I, I just have grave concerns that, look, in that August meeting, no one here knew the pool was open there. I'd say, oh, when's the pool back open? I mean, the, the fact that no one in the room knew that that pool was actively open sort of says a lot about just demographically where we are making this presumption. So I would say that it is a, a, a woeful miscarriage of our service to those residents in that area if we have starved their pool, then told them they don't use it enough after we starved it and dug a giant hole under it, and then told them it was too expensive to fix it.
Just want to remind you, Chris, I think I heard from Meredith that the numbers that we presented were averages from historical, not recently only.
But remember, that pool, that park was not being maintained because we had deferred maintenance on the pump underneath the park. So when, that was a very, that was, that was a wise decision, obviously as a council, that we knew we were going to dig that thing up, so we weren't going to do work on that park because it was going to go for a two-year maintenance cycle, well, we thought it'd be a one-year maintenance cycle. Uh, but that, that somewhat skews any number, right? It's, it's the same argument we made about the golf course, right? Well, the golf course is in bad shape. Well, the golf course is in bad shape because we don't know what we're doing with the golf course.
Well, I'm going to bore you with a little anecdotal. High school girlfriend was a lifeguard, city of El Segundo, and had that spot at Acacia Park. And I'd sit with her while she worked there, getting what we thought at the time well overpaid for what she was doing because there were four children in the pool at any point. And we'd sit there and flirt and talk for hours because no one was there in the pool. And that was in 1997, right? So that pool has been underutilized for many, many years. There's no parking, there's no public parking. If you live in that area, which I used to live right around the corner, the neighbors complain about when people have birthday parties there and then there's nowhere to park. Bathrooms aren't open except during the summer when the pool's open. You know, it's, it, there's, I, you can make an argument either way. I just, there's a better use for that money. To your point, no, it can all not be used right now, but I would then say I'd rather hold on to it. I'd rather put it in the piggy bank and put it towards this looming bill that's coming at the plunge. Or I'd love to put it towards looking into repurposing this giant water-holding tank the size of a swimming pool at Hilltop into a splash pad, something that I think children of all ages could enjoy. So, I mean, I think if you presented all those options to the residents of this town, they'd say, wow, that, well, I'd rather have a splash pad or I'd rather have this. But they're not here, so we have to do the best we can with the lens that we're given. Still your friend.
So do we have consensus on not, going forward with the original recommendation from Rexon Park to go with the pool, a park, not a pool? I know, Doc, Dr. Brand, have you changed your mind on that or are you still, where are you at?
I did, but I, I gave you the latest.
Okay, that, so you're, you want to build a pool, park, not a pool, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. It's Councilman Nickel.
I want to go with the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, recommendation.
I'm going to go with the Parks and Rexon, Rexon Parks Commission recommendation.
Councilman Pimentel.
I disagree. I mean, I thought we had already made this decision. I mean, this is debate three. I mean, maybe it's five out of nine this year. I don't.
Okay. All right, so that's that one. Um, any other items that we want to discuss? I have a quick question on lifeguard pump station. The, this is plumbing into the line at Chevron, right? They're giving us use of their sewer line? Is that what, is that what this one is?
The pump station?
Yeah. So that we don't have to pump them out once a week?
Is it the, the lifeguard pump station?
Yes.
At Chevron?
The, okay. Okay, thanks, Ken.
So we already have the, uh, the force main built and now the next stage is to build the actual pump station at the, at the lifeguard restroom there. That's what that is for.
And I know at one point we asked Supervisor Han for help on that. I, I wonder if it makes sense to go back and ask again. She's about to run for reelection.
Yes, um, there's more to that.
Uh, we did, I did have a discussion with her assistant and it was a non-positive response. However, you can still do the appropriation and direct us to try to secure funding and we can, um.
Yeah, I just, it strikes me, we had the same conversation with Mr. Carpenter here, that they get all the benefits of operating that parking lot, although I don't know how much revenue it's producing, but I know it's pricey on the weekends. And, um, we're maintaining the bathrooms. I see our cleaners out there when I'm down there surfing, cleaning the same ones that do here or doing there apparently and, um, it would be nice if they helped us with the infrastructure.
And, and we're, we're, we're already having those discussions, uh, and just in general. Um, I share with the council that we had a group of department heads, we went down there and spent a few hours just to identify who's who in the zoo in terms of what agency is responsible for what maintenance piece, whether it's the beach or the bikeway, the parking, uh, the, the lifeguard or the, the facility there. So we are, we are totally committed to that and it is enterprise fund money, um, that's doing this, uh, wastewater fund. So we would recommend do the appropriation. We have, we, we hear you in terms of the direction to go get, have better partnerships in terms of paying for it.
And that bathroom, which appears to be heavily used on the weekends and the summer, who, we paid for that, right? Or did the county pay for that? I can't remember who paid for that.
I believe it was the city.
It was the city that constructed it.
City. That thing is in terrible shape as well. I mean, corrosion everywhere, just to note, is another thing that we don't.
The, the building materials were not, um, I always say this very carefully, um, because I won't look at the attorney. The, uh, the, the building, um, materials were not what they should have been and so the, it's, it's aging at a rapid pace and with the weather conditions. We're, we're working on coming up with a comprehensive plan, how to deal with that. As, in many ways, it's a diamond in, in, in the rough there in terms of, as an asset, but we just have to figure out how best to use that asset, who should manage it, uh, how to have effective partnerships with the other agencies, whether it's LA County Fire, um, LA County, um, Public Works or, uh, the Public Works, Beaches and Harbors and all those.
Is it the lifeguard, are the lifeguards still using the top?
No, I don't think so. We.
Because.
That's helping out here with our fire chief and police chief. We, we were out there just recently. There's no evidence that anybody's using that. So, we'll do a follow-up report. Um, I, I, you know, we'll, we'll do a follow-up report with the, the council and come back with options.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you for that. Any other questions on the CIP list or comments?
Do we want to, um, move forward with the windows?
Yeah, I do personally. I don't know how everyone else feels.
I do.
Yes, I have questions about the, um, security improvements though, or just, I know you described briefly to, to me yesterday in our one-on-one, but I think it would be for the public benefit for you to describe the plan.
Sure. I, I'll, I'll do that. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for that opportunity. Our, the City Hall piece of the civic center is a very porous building in terms of there's multiple points of entry and exit. So part of the security measures that we're already taking is to have ultimately just one main point of entry, the way City Hall was many, many years ago. And that main point of entry, which is where, um, the disabled access piece is, it would be in front of planning and building safety as well as public works. That'll be the main point of entry. So what we'll need to do to accommodate that is have a receptionist in that location and not currently where I call it the ticket booth is or the ticket window, but we'd have to reconfigure that, uh, build a cubicle or two and to have it facing the door. So as people come in, uh, we, we will then direct them to the appropriate department. So there's a lot of, um, improvements that have to be done to do that. And that'll be probably the, a big chunk of that. And we're also looking at security cameras and better ways to secure the other doors. So, um, you can only get out if there's an emergency, but you can't come in. So we, 125,000, I like to stress, is less than we ultimately need, but it'll be enough to get us started and to take care of that entry piece.
The human person who'll be sitting at this desk, what department will they likely be?
We're going to work that out. It'll be, um, do we know exactly what department?
Yes, it's going to be my department. So I have an office specialist, uh, and person that used to be seated behind that metal, um, gate that comes down.
Ticket booth.
Ticket booth. Uh, so we're, that doesn't look professional. We're going to rework a workstation for her, um, in the entrance and she'll be stationed there. So she picks up the phone and when, uh, phone calls come into City Hall, she's one that answers that and directs the calls right now. And, uh, so she's used to directing, uh, uh, citizens and constituents to the right person. So she would be the perfect candidate for that, uh, position.
So she's able to handle her workload as well as handle that?
Because she, yes, she can do everything right from the computer and the phone, which is what she does now behind the business counter.
Okay, my only concern with moving her out there is that if she was then unable to keep up with her workload and then we have this conversation about adding a head to, to take that on. But you guys feel comfortable that we will not be having a conversation about adding an employee?
Yeah, we'll, we'll say on the record, you have our word, that will not result in coming back for additional staffing for that. That, that, again, that's part of the, the management piece of managing our staff.
Correct, yeah. So, um, if you recall, I actually reduced the head count in my budget for this year. Uh, so yes, we're, we're, we have a very lean and efficient operation, uh, that we'll be able to handle that. My, my only concern, uh, would be here, security, you know, being a lone employee out in, um, this island, if you will, but the security measures in the CIP should, uh, be sufficient to address, uh, any security concerns.
And, and I'd like to add that we are working in partnership with the police department in terms of, of how we configure all this. And another piece of the 125,000 will be Wayfinder signs, so we make sure we're directing the public and the visitors at City Hall to the right location.
Scott, I, I, I'm glad we're doing this. I mean, we're so far behind all the other city halls that I go into for meetings and stuff in terms of just access points for our employees' safety. Uh, I also know going to Sacramento and other places, it, Torrance, you know, metal detectors, is that something we're considering? Or what's, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, it, it's sort of a, a very good question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of the council, thank you. Um, I've seen the evolution of that, uh, technology at different places where I've worked. We're in the early stages. Uh, we're not there yet, but we may end up, uh, in, in that situation. So that would be a, a lot more money, but, uh, we're not there yet.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a, a question for In the Weeds. Um, some of our entrance and exits that are on the, uh, north side of the building here are glass doors that do not have fire exit type handles on them. If we're locking those during business hours and something happens, are we now trapping our employees inside this building?
We, we're, that, those efforts are already in the works to have the panic push bars, yeah.
But is that incorporated into this 125 or are we going to be having a conversation in six months?
Uh, we have some funds to do that now. It's my, my understanding, uh, correct, Public Works Director, yeah. Yeah, tho, tho, that effort's already in the works. Um, it, it's unusual to see doors like that in public buildings, quite frankly. You'll, you'll see the, the push, the panic bars, you'll see those in probably 99 out of 100 situations in public buildings.
I just want to make sure we don't find ourselves in that situation.
Oh, a, absolutely, uh, absolutely. We have to, we have to adhere to the, the building code and the, the fire code and all of that.
Any other discussion points related to the CIP list?
Mayor, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
So on the Acacia Park, uh, project, I believe the direction from council was to go with the Parks Commission recommendation. So that's no pool and no restrooms. And that total cost was 850,000. So that would free up a million dollars, um, that we can put in CIP reserves right now, the parking lot, if you will. I'll come back to council at, at later time, either next year's budget or sometime throughout the year.
Mayor, if, if, excuse me, if you're going to make final determinations as these parts as you, or pieces of this as you go along, you should ask the public if they have input before you make a final determination?
Okay, good point. Thank you. All right, before I do that, did council, is that, is that right, the way that Joe stated it?
Yes.
Okay, um, any public input on this matter?
Can I make a, a suggestion?
Why don't we allow the finance director to finish the presentation? And then the public could come up and comment on anything, any points they've heard, and then the council could vote.
On all my, including the general fund reserve and the economic uncertainty?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That sounds good to me. Okay. Sorry, Mark.
However you do it, just so long as the public gets a chance to talk before you make a determination.
Okay. All right, thanks. I think we're done on the CIP item.
Okay. All right, so this is the recap on the CIP. Total CIP budget of, uh, just under $10 million, which consists of 5.2 million in carryovers and about a 4.8 in proposed appropriations. Uh, special revenue funds, so total transportation appropriations of just under 2.3 million dollars. Uh, total public safety, special revenue fund appropriations of, uh, just under 1.7 million. Other special revenue fund appropriations of 578,000 and total senior housing fund appropriations of 74,113, which includes 60,000 in CIP, which was on the CIP list. Uh, debt service and enterprise funds, so our debt service fund is 545,000. That's for the annual debt service payment. Water, wastewater, golf course and solid waste. Enterprise funds, uh, total operating budget of 33.6 million, total capital of, uh, just under 2.9 for a total budget of 36.5 million dollars. And a bulk of the, the water fund is purchase of water from West Basin. Internal service funds, so there's three funds here, the equipment replacement, general liability insurance, workers' comp insurance. Uh, total, uh, proposed budget for the three total, uh, internal service funds is, uh, 12.6 million dollars. And it's one thing I do want to point out here, the equipment replacement fund, um, has loaned the golf course 5.7 million dollars. Um, so that's something that will need to be addressed down the road. Something I wanted to touch on, um, is our liability program. Um, so the city belongs to ICRMA, which is a risk pool of about 18 cities, um, in the South Bay and Los Angeles area. Over the last several years, the risk pool has made, uh, great strides at, um, increasing its fiscal sustainability and looking at its members and holding its, uh, members accountable. So we've made some, uh, pretty significant improvements, I wish I want to touch on. Uh, the workers' comp program. So the workers' comp program, um, prior to 1920, the pool, the risk pool would cover anything over $2 million. Um, members, um, I'm sorry, the risk pool would cover anything under 2 million. Anything over 2 million was the excess, uh, uh, coverage. So for 1920, they increased the excess coverage layer, a half million layer, bringing it down to, uh, 1.5 million. So now the risk pool's only responsible for any coverage up to 1.5 million. Before it was 2 million. So now the excess, uh, coverage kicks in half a million, uh, uh, earlier. So this is an enhancement to the workers' comp program. So I did want to point that out. Uh, the general liability program. So our annual pre- The general liability program, so our annual premium decreased by 11%, we're 115,000. The excess coverage for the risk pool increased to, from a maximum of 27 million to 37 million. So here in the general liability program, the risk pool is responsible for anything $3 million or under. Anything above 3 million, excess carriers cover. And prior to 1920, it only covered up to 27 million, now covers up to 37 million. So that's a 37% increase in excess coverage, and again, the premium is decreasing by 11%. So I think this is a testament to the proactive approach, one, that the risk pool's taken, and two, that the city has taken at risk mitigation. So over the past three years, we've really enhanced our sidewalk repair program, our tree maintenance program, and our contract management program. That has all but eliminated claim liabilities in those areas that were prevalent before. So our claims exposure has gone down from 2 million from three years ago, now we're averaging about just under 400,000 a year. And that's paying off. There's three new liability programs that the city opted into for 1920. Auto fiscal damage program, so this policy covers all city-owned and leased vehicles, including public safety, with just a deductible of $10,000. The crime program covers blanket coverage for dishonest acts from employees or elected officials, covers up to $5 million in claims with only a deductible of $5,000. Terrorism program, so that's the third new program we opted into, covers property, business interruption, and liability. The program includes a limit of $10 million per occurrence with a zero-member deductible. So these are enhancements to our liability program for very low costs. And two programs that the city has belonged to for many years, the cyber program. Cyber program offers $3 million per claim with a deductible of only $15,000. And then the property program includes a limit of $250 million with a member deductible of $10,000. So I did wanna point out those liability program enhancements to the council. So future challenges, funding for infrastructure and facilities. As you know, Mr. Berkman, Public Works Director, did his facility assessment, $40 million worth of repairs and upgrades over the next 20 years. Rising service costs, rising retirement costs, general fund subsidies for other funds, and potential recession. So these are all future challenges that the city is facing. And to reiterate the five-year forecast, so we are, you know, this year we do have a balanced budget, but we're using reserves to cover CIP. Moving forward, though, for 2021 and on, that does not include any transfers out to CIP. So these are structural deficits that we are anticipating. Again, does not include any new revenue sources either. Okay, the 10-year financial strategic plan, so the city did create a strategic plan with five goals about three years ago. Our next task is a 10-year financial strategic plan, which is very comprehensive, that will be developed during 1920, and I hope to have it ready by maybe late January. Any questions?
I'm glad you highlighted the liability reduction. That has been a singular victory of your combined team with the city manager and with Public Works. That is something with the notable collapse of claims against the city for, for minor injuries. To save us $110,000 a year is really significant.
And enhance the coverage.
Yeah, and enhance the coverage by $10 million. So absent what we're paying out in liability, plus the $110,000 a year we're saving on our premiums, is an enormous win.
I'll echo that, especially in a landscape of business where workers' comp is on the rise everywhere. You know, restaurateurs in this town are, are just being destroyed by the pool that they find themselves in. So the fact that our pool is able to go down is pretty impressive. I don't wanna know what yours is.
Okay, any other comments? Dr. Brand, Mayor Proton? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, did, so we have really three things to make motions on, but we'll go to public input now. So the public hearing is now open for public input on any of the items that have been discussed related to the budget. And Jack, we're gonna do another public comments when this item's done, that relates to just the meeting in general, if you don't wanna talk about the budget, okay? All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Council discussion. I don't have anything right now. I'm looking at, looking at all of you.
I have just a question, and this is just for edification. On our, our increasing charges, and this might be a works question, where our wastewater charges continue to escalate for what we said to Hyperion? What are, what are the cost drivers on that? I mean, how does the city of LA fix those rates?
I thank you for the question, council member. The city of LA, like all agencies, they prepare their master plans, so the operation and maintenance costs that they, and treatment costs that they pass on to, I believe, we are one of 17 agencies that are in the amalgamated contract with them. So they forecast, as we do, the cost increases over the next several, five or five fiscal years, and give us the opportunity to try and plan for those. We are in the midst of our analysis for the water and sewer operation maintenance plan of our own, and they, similar, on a much larger scale, of course, do the same thing.
Is there a regulatory issue? Now, with our solid waste, it was very easy for us to see why our solid waste disposal costs were increasing, because the dumping, the, once you get down to sort of your four different areas. So my question for this, I guess it was largely, is this just a CPI increase? Or are they passing through maintenance fees and things with a new regulatory of how you can quite literally dump all this stuff? Because, not to belabor the metaphor, but it flushes all the money that Joe is saving on our premiums, because we have to subsidize it for six figures of deficit every year.
That's true. They, they pass it on to all the agencies whose wastewater goes to their treatment plant.
Very well, that's all.
All right, so do I have a motion to, let's see here, sorry, city attorney will read the resolution by title only? Wait, hold on, is there any other council discussion?
We're being asked to do three things, right?
Well, no, it's council discussion first, before we even get to the vote. So Dr. Brand, I know you had a concern. Did you wanna talk about that now, or no?
You know, I've been talking about it for the last 10 years, so I think everybody knows where I stand and that it centers on, on the reserves. We talked about it at the pension meeting today. I was excited when you recommended we reduce the reserves from 19% to 15. Staff didn't listen to that fully and came back at 17 instead of 15. And I think it was a step in the right direction, but not a big enough one. And I still think we're hoarding a lot of the people's money here that could be used on infrastructure and to fight the pension issues that have been mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Yeah, I, I know it's not recommended by Joe Lilio, our Finance Director, or our city manager, Scott Mitnick. I would still like to allocate more towards our pension trust fund now while interest rates are at all-time lows, but that's how I feel.
We should do it.
So any other discussion on the reserve policy? It was recommended that we go from 19 to 17%, taking that 2% and putting it directly into the pension trust fund. Do you wanna talk further about that, or is council ready to move on with that recommendation?
I think the only other further discussion is with the alteration of the CIP, there's a million dollars there. Do we wanna discuss moving that million dollars instead of being absorbed or potentially brought back to us later this year and asked to be added on to programs to put that into the pension trust? So we would be putting 2.5 in the pension trust and doubling what we have there and?
Let's hear from Mr. Mitnick and Mr. Lilio. I think we talked about earlier this evening, you know, earmarking that for the plunge, but?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you can do all of the above, as well as just keep that in the undesignated fund balance. And then when we get further direction on the plunge or other capital projects, that would be available to do that. Now, we do have an undesignated fund balance that we do visit from time to time during the fiscal year when things come up. So it's, it's your call.
I'd like to put it into the plunge. Earmark it for the plunge. Because we're taking one aquatics center away, we should be really putting it toward the plunge.
You can certainly do that, too.
I agree with that as well. I would like to do both, actually, still, is to take that savings, allocate it towards the plunge, the 1 million specifically, the delta on the Acacia, and then allocate the additional 2% towards the, into the pension trust fund, or some other pension paydown tactic that Mr. Lilio comes up with. So let's get to, it sounds like, do we have consensus on taking that million dollars towards the plunge? I heard two in favor of that.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so on the item of the additional 2%, Dr. Brand and I feel that way. Is there anyone else that feels that way?
I think 17% is the right number for now. Let's take a step and see what our financial world looks like in calendar year.
And we can always reevaluate that in six months, because if it's in reserve, we can always make that change.
Yes, if I may suggest, we can always look at it during mid-year and reevaluate, see, you know, where the economy's at, how it's going, and how our finances are going as well.
Okay, all right. Chris, Councilmember Pimentel, what do you think?
I would endorse holding on to some of that with some economic uncertainty. I'm certainly very empathetic with Dr. Brand's position. I, I think that money could be very well spent paying it forward. I think I'd probably been a little more sanguine on that a few years ago, but I think it, just seeing where, where some of the economic indicators, which seem to have all been thrown into a grand spaghetti bowl, every indicator that we used to use seems useless right now. I'm a bit, I'm a bit concerned, so I would rather just have it. And if things play out through the Christmas holidays and everything's booming, then we can allocate it against the reserve. But I would be loath to bring us down to a level where 15% and then just have the Randy Day Fund on top of that. I think that puts us below the sort of holistic 20% that, that, that you would typically like to see in times of economic uncertainty, so?
That's not where you'd be. You have a 15%, you have a 2% economic uncertainty, and then you have all the money that drops out each year from personnel that's not filled. That's usually worth another 10% or so. You're, you're up around the mid-20s.
I do wanna point out that we are utilizing for the first time a tactic of vacancy savings. So we do have 5% built in to the budget, 5% vacancy savings, so it automatically takes off 2.2 million dollars. But Dr. Brand is correct, we typically have been having this huge savings related to vacant positions. So we did come up with a solution this year with this 5% vacancy rate, and that did equate to about 2.2 million dollars that was not budgeted.
Okay, it looks like the only thing that's changing then at this point is the 1 million delta for the plunge. Do I, let's see, city attorney will read the resolution by title only?
Yes, I just wanna make clear, so on the Acacia Park, the determination was to not fund the pool portion, is that correct? And that's where the funds are going for the?
Yes.
The plunge?
Now, what would happen if, in December, we actually get granted the grant?
Well, you can repurpose the other funds.
We can use it still for the park, the park, or put it toward the pool, the plunge?
Sure, and, and, yes. And, and just so, you're gonna be bud, this first vote is on the entire budget, including the CIP and the budget program and the GAN limit. And the record does reflect what your, your individual thoughts are on some of the components. Council can, you know, you don't all have to vote yes, but you don't have to vote no on this to reflect, the minutes can still reflect your individual thoughts on some of the line items. It's up to you. With that said, and with the changes proposed by council, a resolution adopting the 2019-20 final operating and capital improvement budget and the 2019-20 appropriations limit for the city of El Segundo is ready for adoption.
I would like to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
This is actually?
Don't need to do that.
This is for adoption, this is, this is just one action.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I introduce it.
So do you wanna make a motion?
Oh, I can make a motion. I'll motion it.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, 3-2.
Next is to approve the general fund reserve policy as recommended by staff.
Do I have a motion to approve the general fund reserve policy?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, 4-1.
And the final action is approve the economic uncertainty reserve policy.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the economic uncertainty fund?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, 5-0 on that one, all right. Thank you, staff. Thank you for all your efforts on that. Joe and your team, and Scott, and everybody else, thank you. All right. Let's see, staff presentations, there are none, correct? No reports other than from council members. Councilmember Pimentel?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nichol?
Yes, I wanna make all of our citizens aware of a meeting that's held on a quarterly basis. It's a Hyperion meeting. It's held, the next one will be December 4th, 2019, and at 6:30 PM in the Friends of the Library Room. So staff from the Hyperion Treatment Plant comes and goes through reports on projects that are happening, phone calls that they receive for sounds and smells and mosquitoes. It's not a meeting that is very well represented from the community and the citizens that are affected by the Hyperion Treatment Plant. It's very informative, and it is a mechanism that was created, and a forum that was created for the citizens of town to be able to go and speak their mind and let me, the designated representative, hear their concerns about the water treatment plant and then report back to this body. Now, I know we have discussed how we could potentially get reports back from the various subcommittees that we all sit on, and we're not really there yet on how that works, but I think that it is very important, and we should do something to try to get the word out to definitely the people in the northwest quadrant of El Segundo to know that they, they have an arena by which they can come and speak, and I am there. And the other designee is Mr. Jacobson, he's there with me as well each time. The other thing I wanted to mention is the pancake breakfast put on by the Fire Department was fantastic. I had the pleasure of meeting Chief Donovan's daughter, and I inquired as to why she was there that day, and it was his birthday. And so myself, the Fire Department staff, any staff that was there, and hundreds of members of the public proceeded to sing Chief Donovan, "Happy Birthday" on that day. I don't think he was too pleased with me, but it was, everyone enjoyed the moment, myself probably the most, but that's it.
That's great, Scott, thanks. All right, councilmember Brand?
Thank you, Mayor. Today in the Daily Breeze, as every Tuesday, there's a historical piece by Sam Neer, formerly with the Breeze and now doing that special. And today's piece was on the development of Recreation Park here in town, one of the key? One of the key reasons why I was so excited to buy in here in 1974. He talks about the beginnings of that park, how it was funded, et cetera. Interesting piece. And then, on a sad note, John Goot passed away last week. His services are tomorrow at St. Anthony's, it was in today's Daily Breeze obituary. A wonderful man, wonderful family. Sari and I were involved with them back in the 1970s at the preschool co-op in Rec Park. And that family has just done a lot of good here in El Segundo. I know we don't have a memorial on it yet, because it's so recent, but it's a big loss. He was the head of the men's golf club at the lakes, and just very active there in civic affairs, as well as an employee for about forty years with the Computer Sciences Corporation. Just a big loss for us, sad. And would ask that you keep him and his family in your prayers in the days ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brand. Mayor Pretzam, Pürstek?
I'm going to pass tonight.
Okay, I'll be quick. Big news, the L.A. Kings announced that they were going to partner with USC Keck Medical Center and the Meyer Sports Institute. And congratulations to the Kings, they're great partners. They're hosting our event, the Champions of Business, next Thursday, right, Thursday? On the ice, we've already got, what, over four hundred people? No, sorry, over three hundred? Three twenty, eighty's short, I'm sure we'll get there. Carol and I are going to be dialing people later today, no. Interestingly, I was at the SCAG transportation meeting, and I know I shared this with the council members, but I think it's important for everyone to know that the airport-provided forecast for million annual passenger throughput at LAX is 127 million by 2045. That's a huge jump from the 78.9 million we have in place now. Now is at theoretical constraint with the 2006 settlement agreement. And it's much more than what they're doing right now, which is probably in the low ninety million annual passengers. So, still have lots of work to do there. We do have an ally in Alan Wapner, who is the past President of SCAG and the Chair of the Aviation Task Force, and he's also the President of Ontario Airport. So we're working with him, and I want to thank Kobe King for introducing us to him early on. Smokey Hollow Breakfast Club, Ed Miska, longtime banker in town, lives in Manhattan Beach, but always done business in El Segundo, great guy. Put that on in Smokey Hollow last week, it was successful. They had at least thirty businesses represented there, and it's going to continue. The Children's Auxiliary Charity Event, had a great event Saturday night. Carol was there, Scott was there, and it was, it was a good turnout, beautiful night. And also, Carol and I were at the, Sunday night, we were at the Next Trucking Open House. That's a venture, another venture-backed company moving in El Segundo. She, the CEO, very accomplished woman, was very excited to be in town. Carol and I had a great opportunity to chat with her. They're doing some amazing things, and it's, there's more to come, for sure, in terms of new technology coming into El Segundo. That's all I have for this evening, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, just bringing you up to...
No, Scott's next. I got City Attorney, then City Manager. Oh, City Clerk, I missed you up top, didn't I? Did you have anything? Oh, hold on, we got it. It's rare that the City Clerk has something. Madam Clerk, please.
I actually do. I just want to let you know that our office is finalizing some outreach programs for the residents regarding the elections in March 2020. We are looking at two dates in November, which we will hold town meetings, probably in chamber. And we are looking at running in December, mock election setup, so those are coming. Just wanted, but we have to confirm with the county.
While we're on the subject, do we know when the deadline is for pulling papers this year? Because it's going to push them...
It will be earlier, but we don't have that information yet.
Okay.
I suspect we'll get it within the next month.
Okay, great.
I would suspect maybe November, or very early December.
Okay, thank you, Tracy.
And then the other item is, sorry, I will not be at our next meeting. Mona will be here with you.
Great.
Will be out of the country.
Good for you, where are you going? You don't have to say, if you don't want to...
October 11th.
Nice, nice.
And Italy.
Excellent, we're jealous. Okay, City Attorney, back to you.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, the... The legislature last week completed, by Friday, had to have all of the bills out of the legislature to the Governor's Desk. And I read that there were twelve hundred bills that got processed in a matter of, like, two days at the end. So I'm sure they were all very precise and well-written.
I know everybody was bragging about being there until 3:00 AM.
Yeah, well, probably better if they, a little more attention to detail. But, in any event, there were about half a dozen housing bills that were remaining after SB 50, which was the Weiner bill, was taken off and put on a two-year track. And one of the other bills, which was SB 330 in part, got passed and to the Governor's Desk. And in part, that's been, parts of it were withheld for two-year bills, I understand it. And I just want to briefly summarize, because there were massive revisions to all of these bills over the course of the last few weeks. But with regard to the City of El Segundo, it looks like probably the biggest change at the moment that I'm aware of are the accessory dwelling unit bills, which, there were three, actually four of them. And just very briefly, the time to process those is going to go from 120 days on the application to sixty. Cities will not be able to consider lot size, lot coverage, open space requirements as far as the placement of those on properties. They're now going to allow, and this was a change, a pretty significant change, two ADUs on every single-family residential property, a regular ADU and a junior ADU. Garage conversions are now going to be specifically permitted. There was dispute about whether they were allowed or not. Obviously, there was enough dispute that they addressed it in three different bills to, at least if those go forward, will make it clear that garage conversions are allowed. In fact, the way it's written, it actually sort of encourages them, because if you can convert a garage, you can remove, you not only don't have to provide parking for the accessory dwelling unit, you've now removed the garage for the existing structures, residents, and you don't have to replace that. Whereas if you built a new accessory dwelling, separate structure, you could potentially have to build parking for that, and you'd still have the parking for the original home in place. So, I'm not certain I understand the logic of any of that, but that's the way it reads.
Is there a setback requirement in that?
Not for parking, and it varies with regard to the structures and where they are, whether they're existing or not. And, and the word "existing" is very interesting, because that has been the subject of great debate, because the original legislation used the term "existing", which I interpreted to mean "existing", that was something that was already there. That's now being redefined to mean "existing" and "there" or "proposed", which isn't how I understand the word "existing" generally means. But Sacramento's redefining a lot of the terms in the accessory dwelling units, structures, or life to basically make it very permissive. Almost, you know, no rules at all, if you will. And then, oh, well, this one, short-term rentals, I wasn't surprised by this, because I saw this being bandied around, is that those won't be permitted for accessory dwelling units, so it's going to be a minimum thirty-day stay.
Can you back up on that one? I had a hard time hearing that one.
On accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals will not be permitted for them. It will be a minimum thirty-day stay. And I would expect in the future that that may, that that issue will become a bigger issue, because HCD's looking at the, how short-term rentals are face, are affecting the housing market, because it's essentially taking units off the market. And they want to see market, units put on the market. So I think that's going to be another issue coming up. Or it is, it's already being addressed. And how that changes over time will be interesting. On multifamily projects, you'll be allowed to have up to twenty-five percent of the exist, of, twenty-five percent of the existing units added as accessory dwelling units. So if there's a hundred-unit multifamily project, you can add twenty-five units to that.
Does that include R2, or no?
It does include R2 also. And I would expect, based upon the evolution of what we've seen over the course of the last three years, that this will just keep occurring. And as the cities, each city thinks it's, it's got its rules in place and can deal with the issue, this is, you know, this is the third set of bills that have come out on accessory dwelling units in the last four years. And I assume this is just going to keep happening. And, and it's also going to require that our housing element include a plan as to how to incentivize accessory dwelling units to be affordable units. And finally, it's going to authorize cities to allow the sale of accessory dwelling units, which I'm not understanding, because they're not supposed to have, be separate lots, they're not supposed to have separate, you can't require separate water connections. So, it'll be fascinating as I get into the details of this. And I've talked to the City Manager, that the Governor has till October 13th to sign all these bills or not. I predict he probably will sign all of these. He's made it very clear that he wants all the housing possible to be put in place. And I, at that point in time, the city's going to be under the gun a bit to deal with all these issues, because it takes, usually takes sixty, ninety days, I mean, just to go through the process of putting ordinances in place. And you really don't have that kind of time before January 1, when this all becomes effective. And these bills require that these units get processed within sixty days. So, something's going to have to give as far as how the rules are going to be set up for the city to deal with this, and it may require urgency ordinances. But again, City Manager and I have been speaking about this, and it's something that's going to have to get tackled pretty quickly.
It's interesting, this, at last week's South Bay Council Government Steering Committee meeting, Wally, their consultant, mentioned that if you took ten percent of the retail square footage in L.A. County, and you just converted it to housing, problem solved. But yet, they're going to, you want to change the dynamic of our neighborhoods. One of the things that occurs to me, if and when these bills are signed, or I think, in knowing, we also have an issue with LAX, we might want to revisit our parking. You know, we've got some parking study data that I don't think we've ever seen the results on yet, that LAX paid for. And we've got all these ADUs that are going to encroach upon our existing parking capacity. I think we ought to look at that this coming year, if these do become laws.
And the, the RENA numbers, that I, I understand the, the last cycle, and they're every three years, the total number that was allocated throughout the state was approximately 400,000. And my understanding is that HCD is going to be allocating over 1.2 or over 1.3. So you do the math, that means that city's going to end up with three times the allocation that they did three years ago, on top of these new requirements. Now, some of this may blend together. I mean, it, it's not really been discussed yet, but the, some of these requirements may help cities meet their RENA allocations. This is part of what will be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still have short-term rentals on the forecast for October? When are we looking at that?
November 15.
I was going to point that out when you got to the City Manager report.
Oh, City Manager, you're up. Any, well, any other questions for Mark? You've mentioned a lot of stuff there, comments, questions? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Okay, my attempt at humor, I apologize. By way of follow-up, there was a question about the age of the vault cover, so we will follow up and get that information to City Council. Otherwise, no additional follow-up. And in looking at the forecast, there's a lot of really exciting events taking place. You've talked about many of them in the next two to three weeks. So we encourage the residents to go on, onto different websites, including the cities, to get a glimpse as to the really cool things that are coming up. By way of upcoming council meeting agendas, October 1st will be the next regular meeting of the council. At this point, we're looking at two potential hearings, public hearings. One has to do the commercial hauler permit fees, and the other is the proposal for Topgolf out at the lakes. It's tentatively set for October 1st. There were questions, it was just posed, was for the short-term rentals. I believe that's 11, November 19th? Correct? Yep, looking out on that date. That's it for the City Manager.
Anything significant on the 15th, or the, yeah, the 15th of October?
15th of October, pair with me. Percent for the arts?
Ah, yes, thank you.
Yeah, percent for the arts.
Alrighty. That is it for that part, Public Communications. Mr. Axelrod, I know you've been wanting to speak.
I give up.
Really, had enough? Well, thanks for sticking up. We could have let you speak earlier if you really wanted to, even though it wasn't really, you know...
I'm satisfied. Thank you very much for your concern.
Okay, yeah, my pleasure. All right, we are going to adjourn in honor of Mr. John Goot. Thank you for his years of service, his incredible career, and all the best to his wife of fifty-two years, Sandy, his children, and his grandchildren. As Dr. Brand mentioned, his service is tomorrow, 10:30 at St. Anthony's. Thank you.